Good evening, folks. Tonight is our regularly scheduled reorganization meeting. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting or attending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. Okay. Notice is hereby given that the 52nd Annual Reorganization Meeting of the Board of School Directors will be held at the previously announced time of 6:30 in December 4, 2017 here in the Educational Service Center Church Road, Hancock, Lansing, LPA. A call needs to be made to order. All right, do we have any audience citizens? Oh, sorry, flag's flagged. Yeah, sorry. Flag's flagged. Lead us, Dr. Dietrich.
All right. Flight's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, call now to order a nice meeting. Is there any audience of citizens who would like to speak at the next meeting? All right, seeing none, roll call.
This roll call is for the board members that are retaining their seats prior to the oath of office for the new board members. Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. D'Azio.
Yes.
And Mrs. Prokowsky.
Yes.
For holdover of board members present.
Okay. Nomination of the temporary president.
I nominate Susan Leonard.
I move to close nominations.
Some move.
All favor. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. Well, I'm waiting for the judge.
He's here.
Oh, okay. Oh, there he is.
There he is. I wasn't expecting him.
The man knows how to make an appearance. It is with great pleasure that I name the duly elected individuals who were elected to the school board of directors, and they are Christian Fusco -- because I don't need this, right -- Jonathan Casa, Jenna Ott, Tina Stoll, and Mark Warren. And I believe now we will administer the oath of office.
Do we have the oath for me?
Yep.
Right there, I can give them those.
Absolutely. So first, we will have Christian Fusco. You're here. Do we have a Bible?
We have one Bible.
Oh, that works. There you go. Does anyone want to hold the Bible for him, white friend? There you go. You can hold it. Have him place his left hand on it. Raise your right hand. "I, Christian Fusco..."
"I, Christian Fusco..."
"...do solemnly swear that I will support..."
"Do solemnly swear that I will support..."
"...obey and defend the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"Obey, defend, and support the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"...and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity..."
"And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations. I believe that. Okay. I'm going to do that. Now, Jonathan Casa. Here you go. All right, let's place your left hand, raise your right hand. I'm going to try to do this better this time. "I, Jonathan Casa..."
"I, Jonathan Casa..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"The Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"...and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
"And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
Well done. Congratulations. Now, we have Jenna Ott.
What are you going around?
That's your brother?
Yeah.
Oh, great. "I, Jenna Ott..."
"I, Jenna Ott..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"The Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"...and that I will discharge the duties..."
"And that I will discharge the duties..."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations. There you go. Other side. Place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. "I, Tina Stoll..."
"I, Tina Stoll..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"The Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"...and that I will discharge the duties..."
"And I will discharge the duties..."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations. And last but not least, Mr. Warren.
How are you? Good, yeah. How are you?
Pleased to meet you. Place your left hand, raise your right hand. "I, Mike Martin..." Start that over.
"I, Mark Warren..." "I, Mark Warren..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"The Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"...and that I will discharge the duties..."
"And that I will discharge the duties..."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations.
Uh huh.
Okay. Thank you. Before we continue, and since this is my last meeting here, I just wanted to make a few comments about the new people that are coming in and the people that are remaining because I get told or asked or criticized a lot of the time that being on the school board is a thankless job. And I can say from my own experience that it's been the most wonderful experience that I've had in my lifetime. And I also get told that nobody ever thanks me, which is not true. I do get thanked occasionally. And so at this time, I would like to thank Terry and John and Ed for all of your service and for all of the newly elected people. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up and being a part of this wonderful, wonderful organization. So thank you for that. And now, at this time, we are going to nominate a president for one year, and I have the privilege, I would like to nominate Tina Stoll as president of this board.
Move to close nomination. Oh, second, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any conversation, comment?
Motion to close.
Okay. Motion to close. Can I?
All in favor.
Yeah, I got it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Tina, congratulations.
Yes. Okay. It's a long time coming. All right. We really appreciate the support. It's very overwhelming to be here tonight. And on behalf of my fellow school board members, I want to thank the outgoing school board members. As many of you may know, the school board is a volunteer position, and Mr. Shropinski, Mr. O'Donnell, and Mr. Kerr all served 20 some years. So we thank them for their service. Mrs. Sharnak, I know has been on the board since 2011, so she also served quite a bit of time. And then, of course, Mr. Mickey was kind enough to step up last year and serve for Carolyn Murphy's remainder of her term. So thank you again for your service. We appreciate it. To the current school board members, Mrs. Prokowsky, Mr. D'Azio, Mr. Schilling, and Mrs. Leonard, it's really nice to be able to join you tonight, and we look forward to working with you, especially you, Mrs. Leonard. I'm, you know, sorry it's only for one meeting, but I know you're moving on to a great position, so we wish you best of luck with that. I believe this is the first time in North Penn history that we've had five new board members coming on at one time. I am a lifelong resident of the district, but I don't remember there ever being five coming on at one time. So with any job, there is a learning curve, and we will have that learning curve as well, but we're going to strive to get up to speed as quickly as possible. So with that in mind, I'd like to thank the administration for helping us with the transition, in particular, Dr. Dietrich and Mr. Scrocky. We really appreciate all the help you've given us. So and to the community that's out there, I'd like to encourage you guys to keep coming to school board meetings. Mrs. Leonard didn't think we could fill a room. We did. And it's a great way to get involved in your community. We really want to hear your thoughts and, you know, your concerns about issues facing the district today, so we encourage you to keep on coming to the school board meetings. Does anybody else have anything to add? No? Then we'll move on to the nominations for vice president. Do I have a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Terry Prokowsky.
I have a nomination in the spirit of bipartisanship at D'Azio.
Any other nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Nominations are closed, so we'll take, I guess, a roll call.
Roll call. When I call your name, please indicate who you're voting for. This is for the term of vice president, a one-year term. We have Mrs. Prokowsky and Mr. D'Azio. Mrs. Stoll?
Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. D'Azio?
Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. Fusco?
Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. Casa?
Mr. D'Azio.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
Prokowsky.
Mr. Schilling?
Terry Prokowsky.
Miss Ott?
Mr. D'Azio.
Mrs. Leonard?
Mr. D'Azio.
And Mr. Warren?
Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. D'Azio has seven votes. Mrs. Prokowsky has two. Mr. D'Azio is the vice president.
I'll just have some brief comments. Thank you very much to the board for your vote of confidence. I look forward to serving as your vice president for 2018. The work ahead of us is not easy. The expectations are high, and so are the stakes. Nearly 13,000 children rely on us to make good decisions as it relates to their education every day. We'll be most successful as a team if we come together as a team of nine, and I'm confident that we will do that and look forward to being a part of leading those efforts. So thank you very much, and I look forward to serving with you, Madam President.
We do recommend approval of the 2018 Schedule of Meetings per Item VA 3A through B.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Schilling and seconded by Prokowsky. Do I have comments or questions? No? So have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. We need nominations for the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee. We do have the vacancy that was created by the expiration of the term of Tim Kerr. And then, given that Susan Leonard has given a letter of resignation, which we're about to act upon, we have Susan's position also. So we need two nominations for North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee.
I'd like to nominate Mark Warren for the term currently filled by Mr. Kerr and Jenna Ott to fill the term currently filled by Mrs. Leonard.
Some move.
So motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions?
I believe I made the motion.
No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Schilling, seconded.
I just want to say, you're really going to -- I served eight years on the Votec Board, and it's something which is really just a wonderful position. As those who have served on it will attest, you're going to like it. You're really going to like it both, yeah. So I wish you the best.
Yeah, I'm excited to start.
Do I have a motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. We do need to have a non-member treasurer of the board of school directors to complete the unexpired one-year term ending June 30, 2018. And we do need to establish a bond in the amount of $10,000 for the premium to be paid by the school district. Compensation for the duties assigned by the Director of Business Administration shall not exceed $100 per month, so we do need someone to serve in that capacity.
I'd like to nominate our exceptionally qualified Assistant Director of Business Administration, Carol Pitts, to fill that role.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions? Motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. We do have a letter of resignation dated December 1, 2017 from North Penn School Director Susan Leonard, effective December 7, 2017. Is there a motion to accept?
I'm moved. I think a motion regrettably.
So we have a motion to --
Second.
-- motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions?
Yeah. Okay. No, I would go first.
Mrs. Leonard, I just want to thank you for your service here on the board. It's been an honor to serve with you here on the North Penn School Board. Also, we've served together over at North Monco on the Tech Career Center Board, and even in some additional activities, like the teaching of the civics through the Montgomery Bar Association. So you've given tirelessly of your time for six years, and I look forward to watching you get back to the community in a different fashion. So wish you the best. We're going to miss you here on the board. But again, all the best in everything you do. Thank you for your service.
I also want to say how much I enjoy serving with you, Susan, and Mrs. Leonard. And it's been a joy, and I just really wish you the best as a judge. I know you'll do a great job, and, you know, I just wish, I just hope, you know, you just have a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept? Or did you want to make a comment too?
Susan, it's been my pleasure to work with you, when I get to know you, even when we disagree on some issues.
Everything.
But we have grandchildren in common.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss you, too.
All right. So do I have a motion to accept?
We had the motion by Schilling.
John Schilling and seconded by Terry Prokowsky. Mrs. Prokowsky. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam President, I do have a plaque here I'd like to present to Susan Leonard, and it reads, "Presented to Susan Leonard, North Penn School District Board of School Directors, 2011 through 2017, in recognition of your service, dedication, and support of the North Penn School District, its students, staff, and community. Dream big and achieve greatness." And with that, I do recommend that the board engage in some discussion about filling the term, the unexpired term of Mrs. Leonard. I did put for your benefit, if you're interested, what a neighboring school district is doing. I have a copy of that at your table, and you can take a look at that. And I would suggest there'd be some discussion about the process you'd like to use for that. So if you choose to look at that, that is at your table. It's a two-page document that a neighboring school district is using to fill a vacancy that they have.
Dr. Dietrich, if we could, why don't we begin by discussing the timeline that we have to fill the position and when our meeting schedule is until that time?
Yeah. By code, the board does have 30 days to fill the position, so that needs to be attended to. The effective date of the letter is December 7, so counting out 30 days, that would mean by January 6, this would have to be filled. So it does become a little more challenging, given the holidays in there, but by January 6, the 30 days would have passed. So we need to take care of this.
So we need to have a date, then, to have resumes and letters submitted?
Yeah. If you want to follow the process, and this is a process that a neighboring district is using, what they're saying there, and I'll kind of walk folks through this, the first step is, of course, the applicants would need to comply with qualifications. Those are, I believe, in the school code, Section 322 of the code. I won't read those to you, but, you know, you do need to qualify for the position. What the neighboring district is doing then is they're asking the interested applicants who believe that they meet these qualifications to submit electronically through email or deliver in person a letter of interest and a resume to the board secretary. In this case, that would be Stephen Scrocky, and establish a deadline for that. If we are going to do this, our suggestion would be to get that in by noon on Monday, December 11. And then, when that is done, each board member gets copies of those letters and those resumes. And after the board members have individually determined who they'd like to interview, if in fact the board chooses to interview, those names would be submitted to the board secretary. Now, of course, with the sunshine law, there cannot be a quorum of board members having discussion outside of the meeting. Board members can certainly talk to one another privately, but they cannot have a quorum of members meeting outside of the meeting. Once those names are submitted to the board secretary, the board secretary then would determine who the top three people are to be interviewed according to the process used in this neighboring district. And if we're going to do that, we would suggest that be accomplished by the 12th of December, Tuesday, the 12th, 4 o'clock. And then, those top three people would be contacted for an interview to be held by the board at our December 14 board meeting at 7:30 that evening. Those interviews would be held in public. That is a requirement of the school code. And each of those interviewees would be given some time to make some statements and answer some questions. So that's the gist of what a neighboring district is doing. It is something that PSBA has suggested as good practice, so it's not being invented by this neighboring district, but it is one that's being suggested through the School Boards Association. So I have that there for your consideration, but the board is really permitted to do whatever they choose in terms of process, so it's really up to board to have that discussion.
Do we need a motion, then, to follow that process?
You can, if that's what you'd like. Talk about it.
My only concern is that December 11 is a very quick turnaround, so even if the school district gets correspondence out in the newspaper, on Facebook, on social media, however we do those things, we're only leaving less than a week at this point for individuals to...
Well, it is a whole week.
One week. But we'd be acting by sometime in late December. We could schedule a special meeting in January, which historically, believe we've done before since we've gotten Mr. Schilling, right, with previous vacancies?
We did that last year. I think that meeting was in January 4.
You know, I mean, everything comes down to if you want to interview people, because a lot of times, we've done it where we haven't met, and we, you know, put in names, and then we voted on names. And I could say that, I think, we've filled, during my tenure, two or three. And, you know, I just, I still think it works out the same. Unfortunately, it can't be in private to discuss it, but I don't know how. I'd always, I think, you'll be surprised, I mean, people sort of, I think, put in their names. I think enough people will. I'll be surprised if they don't. But we have 30 days on the 7th, so we really don't have a whole lot of time.
Is it too tight to have the 15th be the cutoff date for submitting interests and then have the two weeks inter...
That's not a bad idea.
...intervening as review for us? And then use the final week for the final interviews?
So it's an extra four days?
Yeah. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah.
I'd like it, with those extra days, I like the 15th because, to discuss a proper communication plan, I want to make sure that we have as wide a net cast, so to speak, as possible for the most qualified candidates. And I think that adding time will actually help make up, will make our decision better in the long run, you know, when we have to make it under a tight timeline.
Does that impact, though, the suggested at our work session? That's the 14th?
Yeah. It's just going to do with the 14th.
I don't know how that impacts the timeline.
You'd have to have a special meeting.
Another meeting is what you're saying?
You'd have to, if you want to have more time. You can certainly start to look at calendars if that helps, you know, look at some dates. I don't know the availability of board members. The timeline it gave you is tight. It was predicated on us not calling an additional meeting, figuring that people had the 14th. Now, if people think that's a little too tight, we can look at calendars and see, are there any other dates that everybody's here in town? I know it gets difficult, of course, when you start to approach the holidays, but it's really up to the board, you know, wherever they want to.
I'm comfortable holding off. I think it's, give us a little extra time, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, agreed. I'm in favor of giving us a little more extra time.
Then we ought to look at a date for the meeting and kind of back plan from there.
Yes.
So pull out calendars and see what's available.
We do. We have a special meeting the 1st of January.
You can do it. This is two special meetings, first we could do it.
How about the 4th of January? That was perfect.
It's Thursday. Yeah, that'd be fine. Work.
January 4th, Mr. Schilling.
That would work. Yeah.
We can. We have the 9th right now, is in the... You can flip that one, if you'd like to flip that one.
Would it make it easier, the resignation or effective December 9? I was under time constraint, so that makes it easier for you.
You can?
I was trying to make this not complicated.
I'll do it the 9th, then.
But, I mean, I could make, I could change my resignation, make it effective the 9th, and that gives you to the 9th where you already have a meeting scheduled, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay.
I amend my, I can do that. I recommended her resignation, so I amend that to the 9th. I want a second, I can do that. I believe the resignation would have to be the 10th for the 30 days to hit January 9. Oh, the 10th? All right, do it the 10th.
There's 31 days in December, so.
All right, do it the 10th.
If that works for you, Mrs. Leonard.
As long as it's done before the 13th.
Oh, okay. That's how it works. Thank you, Susan. So amend that, yeah.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion, then, that we revoke the acceptance of Mrs. Leonard's letter of resignation.
You can amend it.
You can keep the plaque, all right?
You can amend it, then.
Give it back.
You can amend it.
I think we have to pull it back.
Well, I just listened to it. I'll tell you.
You can amend it.
Verbally.
Yeah.
Civil rights.
We need to indicate that you're revising it.
I am amending my letter of resignation to take effect December 10, 2017.
Some move.
So the motion, then, is to accept Mrs. Leonard's resignation as amended to reflect the resignation date of December 10, 2017. So moved.
So John, Mr. Schilling made the motion, and Mr. D'Azio seconded.
Regrettably, I...
Do I have a motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, that helps tremendously. So we'll just establish some new dates, then. The board's pleasure is to have a deadline for submitting an interest, a letter of interest and a resume by what date now, now that we have until the 9th of Jan?
15th.
The 15th of December? Okay.
Good, that works out good.
And then we'll get those two board members, and you get your top three choices to us. And then we'll set that up.
Great.
Okay, very good.
How's that going to work? Is that each board member is going to submit top three to someone?
To the board secretary.
Do we submit it to the board secretary?
Mm-hmm.
And then whichever three candidates get the most fixed?
Correct.
All right, so, moving on. Other, is there any other business? We wanted to finalize the committee meetings, or the committee schedule? And the committee assignments?
Committee assignments, I just have something.
Yes, yes. So, for the committees that are, we have scheduled, finance, we wanted to do that as committee of the whole, because there was a very difficult budget coming up for Mr. Scrocky, so we wanted to make sure it's an all-hands-on-deck effort, so everyone will be on that committee. For support services, I have Mr. Schilling, who's doing it for years, great, so, Mr. Casa, and myself, Tina Stoll. For ECP, I have Mr. Fusco, Mr. Casa, and Mrs. Burkowski. For personnel and negotiations, I have Mr. D'Azio, Mr. Warren, and myself, Tina Stoll. For safe schools, I have Mr. Casa, Mrs. Burkowski, and Mrs. Ott. And for North Monaco, we already did that one, right? And then the education foundation, I have Ms. Ott. And for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, I have Mr. Fusco. Mr. D'Azio is currently on that board as well, but he's expressed a desire to resign from that position eventually, and Mr. Fusco's expressed an interest in it. I have to learn to call you guys by your last names. So, do we have to have a motion to accept the committee assignments?
Yeah, you should.
So moved. And if I could, if I could note that I believe the Personnel Negotiations Committee will also be the Board Hearings Committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
So as amended, I'll make the motion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Do I have any comments or questions?
Just one point of clarification, you mentioned the IU. We may need to get a resignation from you, and then we'll take action. That's, it's more of an FYI than actually a part of the motion.
That's correct, correct. I plan to make that my resignation at the January meeting of the IU.
So then, and...
And Chris will take over. We'll do it by motion, then.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Any other business?
I have something. It's been discussed in the past and throughout the campaign to utilize the RFP process more frequently to ensure we're maximizing the taxpayers' investment in our schools as it relates to professional services. So, in the interest of keeping a promise, I'd like to make a motion to have the business office present, open RFPs for our professional services, for architect, and for legal services, so that we can act at the action meeting upcoming.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Do you have any comments or questions?
May I just clarify for the record, that's request for proposals by RFP.
Correct.
And what is the timeline you're running at?
By the next action meeting?
By the 14th of December action meeting, or what do you have in mind?
Yeah, the 14th.
By the 14th or by January?
Steve, is that timeline problematic for you, or is that something you can do?
Well, we can have a draft of the RFP to share with the board on the 14th. That gives us 10 days to prepare.
Great, thanks.
At that point, the board can elect to make any amendments, or we can have a discussion about the timeline and the process you'd like to utilize for the RFPs.
And as it relates to legal, I suppose, we have, currently, we have separate counsel for personnel matters, we have general solicitorship matters, we have special ed counsel. Will they all be lumped together? Will firms be able to bid on different things? How will the RFP be written?
That's the board's choosing. We can write the RFP for kind of a one-size-fits-all to handle all legal matters, or you can elect to do an RFP for segmented, specialized areas of the law.
So how are you going to do that? I mean, my point is, shouldn't you be, well, you're just, are you saying we're going out to bid, or are you just going to, I'm confused. Are you going to send it to a committee to formulate an RFP how you want to do it, or I'm confused.
Well, from the business office, what we would do is prepare a draft language that's been used in other places for architect and legal services. So if the board would like separate RFPs, to have one for, let's just say, special ed for the sake of argument, and the rest for all the other areas of school law, we can prepare multiple RFPs within that one particular category.
Yeah, that's what I'm, so what are you going to do?
I'm looking for the board for direction. If you would like to have it segmented, just let me know, we'll draft the RFP however you'd like.
I think it probably makes sense to put out all of our legal needs in one RFP, and if firms want to bid on just one piece of it, they can certainly do that. So in the RFP, I just think you put an invitation to bid on as much or as little of the work as you want.
Yeah, it seems like that gives us more options in terms of what's being presented.
And, I know, in my line of business, that actually provides the, you know, an entrepreneurial approach and probably most efficient. Worst-case scenario, if we decide, based on the draft language, we could always do an RFQ, which is just request for qualifications, but it's best to have those who are the experts come up with the potential solutions, as opposed to us dictating what the solutions may be.
I'm just concerned making sure that if an RFP does go out, it's just like when we bid on projects, that the most qualified person is, you know, hired. I mean, that's, so I don't, it all depends on who writes this RFP and how it's written. I mean, oh, is it going to come back to the board, and, you know, so we evaluate it and then make a decision, or is it just going to be sent out after you're writing?
No, no, our recommendation would be to actually receive the proposals, and similar how we're handling the election of a new, or appointment of a new school board member, I would recommend that the board review the responses once they're back, or committee, that's the board's discretion, review the proposals once they come back, and select the organizations that you'd like to bring in for an interview, and conduct interviews of the firms that you're interested in.
John, are you asking the step before that, though? The draft of the actual RFP before it goes out? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's, like, see, we have, I really believe we are the best architects, best, I mean, I have no complaints, I've sat under these guys, I've sat under guys before them, and I just want to make sure that, you know, what is proposed is fair. I mean, it's hard for me to sit here and criticize what we all already have. I mean, we've had guys who've done exceptional jobs, and I'm not being critical of Mr. D'Azio or you guys, you know, method, but I just, you know, when you go out to somebody's proposals, you'd always get the best guys, is what I'm saying. And I want to, I want to make sure that that happens that way, that you get the, you know, the best bid, but the best service, too. And you have to be careful, because I have friends of mine who are on other school districts, and they've done similar situations, and it hasn't always turned out in their favor. You know what I'm saying? We've had it, like, for instance, architect, we've had it unbelievable with, like, under, change orders have been under, I remember Mr. Kerr used to deal with that kind of stuff, couldn't believe it. An whole budget, things like that. And then on the other hand, I've talked to other school districts that have done, and, you know, the guy gets in there, and all of a sudden, you've got a million dollars all around. So I'm just careful, you know, of making change of something which has been very, very good service we've got through the years. So I'm not totally against what you're saying, I'm just being very, very careful that what is done is done in such a way that we get the best for the dollar. And the most qualified for the amount of money.
I think that's part of the calculus that'll go into making this determination, obviously. You know, we'll evaluate when we get those responses to the RFPs, the history, you know, with the district and the work they've done in terms of the deliberation that we have and how we want to move forward, so.
The current architect and the current attorneys, they're free to submit their proposals.
Oh, I realize, yeah. And that's, I understand that totally. And I just, that's why I say I want to make sure it's written properly, so that...
That's, that's what you said, Steve, that you're going to, you're going to show us the draft, and then give us a chance to make amendments or changes.
Yeah, I'm not seeing RFPs written, you know, in other, not here, but other places where God didn't write a good article, they had to pay back horrible. And that wasn't, not here. I don't want to say where, because it's all, you know, I'm a little fan mouth, that was a nightmare.
I have a great deal...
So I'm not, you know, I try to keep things out of it, but I'm being fairly honest, but I've seen it where it wasn't done right, and it was a nightmare.
I have a great deal of confidence in our business office that they'll get it right.
No, no, I'm not saying, I just, you know, I just want to know how the process is going. I'm not questioning that.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Fusco, right, and seconded by Mr. Casa. Do we have any other comments or questions?
I believe we need to take public comment on this before we vote on it, since it was under other business.
Okay, was it on there?
Is there any public comment? Would anybody like to step up to the microphone, make a comment? No? Yes, Mrs. Stamsker? Yes, you have to at least state your name and address.
Mrs. Stamsker. How are you, man? I've seen you a long time. Good to see you, you look really well.
Thanks. Says when you retire, you look much bigger.
I'll take that.
Yeah. Ruth Stamsker, you want my address?
Yes, please.
308 Primrose Drive, Upper Gwinnett, 19446.
I believe there's a place to write it up there.
Pardon me?
You'll have to write it up there, if there's paper.
Oh, okay, well, I'll do that. All right, I'll do that. Do you want me to do that?
No, no, you can do it.
Okay, all right. Question, how, when you talk about the RFPs, which I think it's a great idea, even for services, even though you're not required to do it for services, because we did that at the county level, and we found we were very successful, how do you publicize it? Do you have, I don't know what you're, as far as you're, you have a website where you put all that information on, or how do you get it out to, to the community to know that, you know, these things are now up for an RFP?
That's a great question. A couple different ways. First off, we will publicize the RFP on our website. We do have a link on our webpage specifically for RFPs and for public bids that we conduct. But secondly, we will automatically send out the proposals to those firms, architectural firms and legal firms that do business with school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. So there's a small subset of firms that specialize in school law, that specialize in school construction. It might be 10, 15 of each, for each, we'll automatically send the RFP directly to one of the partners at those firms, so they're aware of it.
Okay, that's great, because that's the biggest problem. If you want to try to infuse a new group of people to come forward, they have to be aware that, you know, you have an RFP out there. Okay, thank you very much for what I sit here on.
Thank you, Mrs. Stamsker.
And by the way, congratulations to all, and I wish you, you know...
Thank you.
Because it is, as Susan said, it can be, it's a difficult job, and, you know, everybody complains, but thank you very much for your service.
Okay, so now can I take a motion?
Yeah, there's none.
Anybody other public comment? Okay, so, motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved, right, okay.
We have the, we have the motion, we have the second, we have the director of business office to prepare the RFPs. Done the public comments, and now you can call for the vote.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And I think we have to do the meeting schedule, right?
That was in that earlier.
Was that in there? Okay, so, is that it, then? All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Schilling, you have a second? Do you need a second?
I'm hungry.
There. Woo!